I think I'm gonna mute myself, okay?
You are? Okay.
Well, so one minute off.
Okay. Looks like I'm just waiting on Mr. Russell. Yeah, I have 6:31. I'd like to call, to order the meeting of the virtual planning board of March 22nd. And I'd like to first take a call to order. Mr. Coons.
Present.
Ms. Delicio. I see you. You're muted.
Present.
Okay. Ms. Foley.
Present.
Ms. Gilbert.
Hello.
Mr. Alme.
Yes, I'm here.
And Mr. Russell. I don't see you. But maybe he'll sign on in a bit. Looks like we have a quorum tonight. Before we get started, I'd like to remind all board members that's to be recognized by the chair if they wish to speak. This meeting is being recorded. Uh, Mr. Russell, I see you are here.
Uh, yes.
Welcome.
Sorry, a few minutes late.
Okay. Uh, first item on the agenda would be the receipt of correspondence. We have, Helene, correct me if I'm wrong, touch point waterway letter dated March 5th. Email from, uh, Lorraine Iavoni, February 23. Email from, uh, Lorraine Iavoni, March 8th. And then Sue, you added tonight a notice of submarine cable, chapter 21, uh, chapter 91.
Yeah, that was an email that just came in today. It's a, it's a notification and in the email there's a link to the chapter 91 license. The board doesn't need to take an action, but chapter 91 does require that the planning board be noticed. This is a cable that's offshore, um, being run along the coast. So, it's a 500 and some page application. Um, I thought the link might be sufficient.
I actually listened to the comcom discussion on this. It was actually quite fascinating. So, um, I just, my other, my only point on our correspondence is we used to list them. So I'm not sure why we got away from that. Just if we could get back to listing them again in the future, that would be appreciated.
I think they're on our SharePoint site. Correct me if I'm wrong. What do you mean by list them?
We used to list them under the correspondence.
On the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll do that.
Ron, this is Mary. I have a question about, uh, correspondence.
Yes, Mary.
Did you, you listed out the Waterways Regulation Program for Tuck Point, correct?
Yes.
Um, are we going to discuss that or are you just acknowledging it?
Uh, I believe I don't have to act on that. Uh, it's just acknowledgement of the letter. I think, I think this came in a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, my only question is, is it, it's saying that residents need to submit any questions or concerns or complaints by April 4th? And I'm just wondering where that's posted on the town website? So people know that.
It's out of my lane. Um, Sue, do you have any insight into that?
I don't know. Um, I don't know that the harbor master is handling that project. So I don't know if he has something posted or not.
Ron, that's fine. I would, yeah, I'll email by on.
Yeah, that's who I would check with.
Ron?
Yes.
Um, I don't know of any border committee that lists, um, all the emails or letters they get from people. The selectmen don't do it. Planning board never did it when I was on there. Zoning board never did it. What's the point of listing, uh, uh, somebody's emails or letters to us? They should just be available to the whole board as far as I'm concerned and, and mentioned at the meeting, but no one else does more than that.
It was our procedure and in my opinion, board is welcome to take any other position they wish. Um, several residents have come to the meeting asking if we've received it. So until we respond to residents saying that we've received it, I think it's a simple way to acknowledge that we did receive the correspondence by listing it on the agenda. It has been our practice. This is the first one that we have. Just wanted to bring notice to it.
I can have a
A simple way?
If it's Well, I can have a lean. Helene, you, can you list these on the agenda when they come in? That would be fine. Wow. I don't have an issue with that.
Yes, I will be happy to do that.
Thanks. Okay, right now, the next item is to allow public comment on any items not on the agenda with a limited time. Anyone from the public wishes to speak on, to the planning board on anything. Okay, so the next item is the Housing Choice Initiative presentation. Uh, tonight we have two distinguished lawyers to speak and answer questions on the topic. Uh, we have a KP Law Attorney and our Town Council, John Witten, who has been advising the board off and on for over 30 years. He has a short PowerPoint, uh, presentation followed by questions. And we also have our town moderator, Alan Wilson, who's been top town moderator for over 26 years. Alan was of counsel with the law firm of Goodwin Proctor and later was senior attorney and vice president of the Conservation Law Foundation. He also chaired the Board of the Massachusetts Audubon Society and later was a director and vice chair of the National Audubon Society. So with that, I will turn, uh, the presentation, uh, John, to your PowerPoint display. Feel free to share the screen.
Thank you, Ron, and good evening, members of the board. So just give me a second and I will get this thing going. Ron, just before I hit play from start, can you see what's on the screen now?
I can, yes.
Okay, great, good. Um, so members of the board, just before I hit start, and then I think I'm gonna lose my ability to see everybody, uh, please interrupt me as we go along. Uh, I'm gonna just give an overview of the legislation and I'm gonna do my best, uh, my level best to be objective. Um, so if the board would like my opinion of this legislation, I'm happy to provide it, but I don't really see that as my role, at least initially. Uh, I'm here to explain as best I can what the legislation is, how it works, or how we think it's gonna work, and then I'm happy to, to offer thoughts. Um, I think there's only one gratuitous comment that I've, I've put in the slideshow and I, I tried to limit it to, to that. Um, so I'm gonna do my best to be objective. Please, please don't take my objectivity as my acceptance. And so I'm speaking to you both as a lawyer and a planner. The lawyer in me is going to tell you, uh, the, the law as I understand it. The planner in me is the one that's gonna stay muzzled, at least, uh, until you ask me questions. So, so with that, let me, let me just start. The, uh, legislation was passed just recently, signed by the governor, and there are really four critical parts of it that I wanted to explain. And again, happy to get into the weeds at, at any time. Please let me know. So the first is, this is an amendment to chapter 48, the zoning act. Chapter 48 has been amended very few times since 1975, and this may be one of the largest amendments we've seen in all this time. Uh, the big expansion in terms of coverage really comes in this definition of MBTA communities, of which Manchester is one, and its allowance for new housing development. It is a housing production bill. Uh, I think I can say that objectively, that's its intent, and, and that's probably going to be a very successful outcome. It changes dramatically the quantum of vote requirements that we are used to. And that's Alan's role, um, is part of this conversation as well, because as moderator, he's now gonna be looking at quantum requirements that are very different than they used to be. We all know and have always known that zoning is a two-thirds vote, and a special permit is, always requires a super majority of the board at that time. So a seven-member body, five affirmative votes, a nine-member body, six affirmative votes, a three-member body unanimous. That has all changed. So the implications of the voting requirements is really significant. And then the last part that I'm gonna cover, there are other pieces that are worth discussing, but the last part, just factually, is this new provision of an appeal bond. And, and frankly, that is one of the most distressing parts of the legislation for, for me. Uh, and, and we'll talk about it. So 48 section 1A, which has all, are always existed, but now has been dramatically expanded, provides new definitions for how the relevant statutory revisions work. And for tonight's purposes, the phrase eligible locations, mixed-use development and multifamily housing might be the most relevant. They're all relevant in one form or another, uh, but those three phrases, I, I think, probably carry the most weight for what we're about to, to cover. So let me just put this on the screen and just give you a, a moment to, to look it over so I don't read it to you, and then we can discuss it in a little more detail. So by being an MBTA community, which Manchester is, and I'd say parenthetically, I live in Duxbury in the South Shore. The closest train station is five to seven miles away. We, we're an MBTA community as well. If, if you look at the communities chosen to be MBTA communities, they have very little relationship to MBTA access. Um, so it's kind of an interesting view of how the legislature chose to select communities that have this obligation that's on the screen versus not having this obligation. So by being an MBTA community, there must be at least one zoning district where multifamily housing is permitted by right. No special permit required. That does not necessarily translate into the construction of units that will meet the SHI requirement. And the relevance there is, Manchester is being told, as are other MBTA communities, you have to have at least one zoning district by right that permits multifamily housing at a density of approximately 15 units to the acre. Those units will only count toward the town's SHI, which relates to your chapter 40B obligations. If the municipal zoning bylaw or ordinance requires that they meet the SHI requirements or meet the below market rate rental or sale prices. So by their own device, these units in MBTA community required units will not meet the SHI compliance mandate. That means that if the town has a multifamily housing district, which it is now required to have, unless the bylaw requires that a percentage of those units be below market, they will not count on the town's SHI because they will not meet the 80% of median requirement. They will not be affordable. They'll be multifamily, but they won't necessarily be affordable. So that's an important factor for the town to consider. The second part of this section, three, three A's requirements is that the units that are constructed cannot be subject to age restrictions, must be suitable for families with children, and that's generally defined as bedroom count. And they must have a minimum density of 15 units to the acre. In some communities, 15 units to the acre is just about right, maybe a little bit low. In other communities, that's dramatically more than the community has had in its build-out experience. But again, just, it, it is what it is. That, that's part of the legislation. Up, and again, please interrupt me as, as we go along with this, if questions, we can always go backwards.
I have a question, John.
Of course.
Um, so what is suitable for families? Is that two-bedroom, is that three-bedroom and bigger? Um, and, uh,
Yeah, yeah, Gary, that, that, that is probably how it's gonna shake out. I mean, right now, it, it seems to be three bedrooms or more. Uh, query whether or not it's a single-parent household, maybe suitable for families with children, could be two bedrooms. We, we're just not sure because we don't have any guidance from DHCD as yet. And just to take Gary's question, go a step further. We also don't have any guidance from the MBTA, which has been empowered to determine whether or not cities and towns are compliant with this legislation. MBTA and the Mass Transit, Trans, MBTA and the Mass Transportation Authority will be the consultant group that's providing DHCD responses as to whether or not cities or towns have complied with this. So that's an interesting dynamic in and of itself. We, we don't know yet whether a two-bedroom unit would be suitable for families with children. I suspect they won't because the pressure is for three-bedroom units.
And the tandem question has gotta be, how many of those 15 units per acre have to be suitable for families?
Yeah, exactly. It, it, exactly. We, we, we don't know. We don't know. Um, I think it's on the next slide, uh, this last piece here. There's a presumption that cities and towns are compliant with this legislation until guidelines are developed. And again, I can't help myself but say this, that is a classic ex post facto law. They're gonna tell us what the rules are afterwards and make them retroactively applicable. That's, that's unacceptable, but that's how this is written. The legislation was passed in the middle of the night, in the middle of a pandemic, with the exception of being told what the rules are. Being told we'll be telling you what the rules are later. So right now, cities and towns are deemed compliant, but it's entirely possible when the regs come out. And notice that the statute talks about guidelines, not regulations. That when the guidelines come out, it's entirely possible cities and towns will not be compliant, and we just don't know. And again, it's the hallmark of, of ex post facto legislation to do exactly what, what just took place.
John, this multifamily zoning district has no, uh, there's no connection with that and affordability. Is that correct?
Not unless the town makes the connection. So as written, the legislation on the mandatory multifamily district does not contain an affordability component. So unless the bylaw or ordinance requires that, then they will not be below market and therefore they won't count on the town's SHI. On the screen, so we talked about the third bullet, but let's start with the, the top. The carrot in the stick, there's no carrot here, but there is a stick. The stick is if cities and towns in, that are MBTA communities do not comply with the prior slides requirement, which is this, at least one zoning district that allows multifamily by right, then the stick is the city or town will not necessarily comply with the requirements to seek housing choice funds, capital project funds, and most notably, because this has been a big ticket for a lot of cities and towns, mass works funding. So for cities and towns that say, we're not gonna play ball, their exposure is the loss of potential state funding sources. The legislation is vague as to whether it is a will or may, so I write will and may because we just don't know. We just don't know. So we've seen this kind of legislation before, which is comply or you don't get state or federal funding, and it generally works. That carrot's pretty, or that stick's pretty significant. But in this legislation, there's no carrot. There, there's nothing to grab onto other than if you don't, you won't get the money that you used to get. Uh, I put back in the second bullet, this issue that further guidance is necessary. We, we just don't know. So the legislation was not ready for prime time, but they had sufficient votes, given the situation, so it got passed. And now the legislation is gonna have to be backfilled in terms of providing cities and towns with the guidance that we, we need. We're, we're just guessing at this point what that's gonna be. The second big change in terms of the quantum of vote is how town meeting will act relative to these petitions before. So we all know that historically, any change to a zoning bylaw, even if it were grammatical changes, required a two-thirds vote. Now, the quantum has changed for some land uses, some land developments to a majority vote, and here, here's the big ones. Any of the following as of right, multifamily housing with mixed ju, or mixed use in an eligible location, and an eligible location is a defined term. Accessory dwelling units, another defined term, and open space residential, kind of historically referred to as cluster developments. These are by right, those require a majority, not a two-thirds vote. To allow any of the following by special permit, also a majority vote by town meeting. Same things, multi, multifamily housing, increase in permissible density, accessory dwelling units, and a reduction in parking spaces. Those can be required to obtain a special permit, planning board, Board of Appeals, Board of Selectmen as usual, but the vote of town meeting to get it into the bylaw is majority, not two-thirds.
John, this is Mary. Can I ask you a question on that?
Of course.
So with the, um, first part, the, um, as of right, and in order to do that, your bylaw must match with their new definition of these. So if our bylaw does not match, doesn't that revert back to the two-thirds?
So if the current bylaw does not meet the requirements of 3A, just back to this slide, then the current bylaw is out of compliance with 3A, and the current bylaw needs to be revised in order to meet this requirement here, to, to apply and comply with the funding requirements. So most cities and towns that are deemed MBTA communities do not currently comply with this new legislation, which is to allow at least or have one zoning district where multifamily is allowed by right. If you don't meet that requirement and you don't revise your bylaw to meet that requirement, then the town is gonna be out of compliance with section 3A.
Um, I, I, I must have asked my question terribly because I, what I meant was with like accessory dwelling unit, multifamily, um, and, and you did mention eligible unit. So if in our bylaws, we're saying accessory dwelling unit is different than, um, I think how it defines it, this new way defines it, something like 900 square feet or one-third of the current residential size, whichever is smaller. If we're proposing a bylaw that does not match that, if that goes to town vote, that still needs to be two-thirds.
Yes, I, I understand the question, Mary. It's a great question. If, if, if we're ignoring, and I don't mean, I'm not saying ignoring in a negative sense, but if we're ignoring what's on the screen and we're gonna move forward with a new bylaw governing accessory dwellings, then that is whatever it is, and that quantum of vote would be two-thirds. But, so, let me just finish this thought though, Mary. But that resulting bylaw would not be consistent with section 3A. So, y-yes, the moderator would have to entertain a, a two-thirds vote requirement for that bylaw, but that bylaw that you're referring to is inconsistent with section 3A.
And then what are the ripple effects from that, getting back to the grant funding and all of that?
Yeah, exactly. The, the, the penalty for non-compliance is loss of or not able to obtain these funding sources and these, or future funding sources that come out of the Commonwealth. So that's the downside for cities and towns, and you know, we've seen this before. Where you offer an incentive for cities, towns to do something to gain funding, many communities choose not to do it. They choose to do it, not to do it because they don't either need the funding or they refuse to comply. That would be the penalty here.
Yeah, sure. I think each community has to look at, okay, do we want these grants? Do we need these grants? And then they decide they wanna, you know, do the zoning by that or, or not. So, so I must have missed one thing. So it's not just being an MBTA community that would prevent you from getting these grants. It's the whole new 48 proposal.
I don't think so.
Yes.
Okay. John, I don't think that's right. I, I don't, I think
I thought it was just the MBTA community, but I, I clearly
You know, I take that back. It's just the MBTA communities that would, yes. So this is, uh, section, um, 3A.
And the, the only requirement there is that you have the, um, multifamily dwelling as of right in an eligible, eligible location. It doesn't require that you do any of the other things that you can do under section 19 of the, of the special.
Oh, great. Thank you. That, that, that's what I was thinking, and so that was a little twist. So
Just let me, I'm no expert in this and I'm just learning my way. So maybe I, I'll ask John if he agrees.
No, I do agree, Alan. The only thing I'd add is that multifamily district is the 15 unit per acre minimum, though. So that is the only connection in an MBTA community to get the funds that are either housing choice or the capital projects fund. If the town chooses to ignore that requirement, then that is the, that is the only catch. Only an MBTA community would suffer the consequences of ignoring the multifamily housing district and then losing the ability to get that funding. That's correct.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Uh, I think we were one slide ahead.
Can I add another question on top of that?
Go ahead, Gary, please.
Maybe Alan would respond. Um, so does town meeting have the option to say, okay, we have this proposed bylaw for multifamily? Um, someone says, I wanna vote on this with a two-thirds, uh, majority, not 50%. Um, and the heck with section, 48, section one, or whatever section this is. Can, can that be decided on a vote-by-vote basis at town meeting?
No. The answer's no.
So it has to be 50% majority, period?
Yep, but the, the legislature has changed the rules and they can do that.
You can't voluntarily say, we don't care about getting some grants. We wanna raise the bar for the, the vote that's needed.
No, I, I, I agree with Alan. It's, it's statutory at this point. It's, there's no discretion at the town level.
If, if there were a motion on town meeting floor to require a two-thirds vote instead of a simple majority, I would rule it out of order.
Yeah. I think the question, the, the question that, that Mary and Gary are really flirting with that we don't have an answer to is, what if we chose to ignore the definition of accessory dwelling unit, the 900 square feet, and have our own definition not called accessory dwelling unit? Called something else, and that doesn't comply with the minimum requirement? And that doesn't comply with the minimum requirements of the new legislation? Would that be the two-thirds vote? And I think that's the unanswerable question at this point in time. We need to think about it because the way this legislation is written, it doesn't preclude a municipality from calling that accessory dwelling unit something else and meeting other criteria. And if that were the case, back to Mary's point, would that be a two-thirds vote? Or would that be a simple majority? So in a way, we're, we're challenging, can we ignore this legislation? Do our own thing under the old 48? And does that revert back to the traditional two-thirds vote? That's going, that's the question. Go ahead, Alan.
An accessory dwelling unit is a, is a good example of that because the statute defines it as being no larger than 900 square feet. And our draft bylaw defines it as being no larger than 1,200 square feet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, and you know, normally we would say you can't conflict with state law, but the state law here doesn't set necessarily the ceiling. It sets the floor. And we're complying with a piece of the legislation or not. If we choose not to comply with this new legislation, can we maintain the 1,200 square feet? And I think the answer, my gut feeling is, without sticking my neck out too far, my gut feeling is we can. Because we, there were parallel tracks, or there could be multiple tracks in order to meet this new legislation, MBTA community or otherwise, we have to play by these rules. But if the community chooses to ignore the MBTA rules, then the question is, doesn't the old way or historic way of doing business still apply? And we don't, we just don't know. We just don't know. It's going to be a community that's going to be willing to take that on.
Ron, I have a, I have a comment. If I might. Ron, you're muted.
Go ahead, Sue. Sorry.
Thanks. John, correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds like you're saying that, that you're tying the ADUs to the MBTA community, and I, I think they're completely separate. I think that unless you're trying to get to, I mean, that's, I think the only thing the MBTA community requires is a multifamily zoning district. I think the ADU bylaw is just a bylaw outside of the, outside of the MBTA portion that they're, they're trying to level the playing field on in terms of voting. Is that, am I reading that wrong?
No, but I'm agreeing, I'm agreeing with you, Sue, that the requirement for the MBTA communities is the multifamily district. But couldn't a municipality have an ADU requirement that differs from the definition under the new 1A? And I think the answer is yes. And if so, would that be a two-thirds or majority vote? I think that's the unanswered question that, that I'm throwing out there.
Yes, I agree. I think that would require a two-thirds vote if it didn't comply.
I, I think so, but it, there's a part of me that says, yeah, but that still conflicts with the intent of the statute. And someone going to say, could it be argued that the new definitions in 1A control how cities and towns adopt accessory dwelling units? Meaning they can't be greater than 900 square feet. As we sit here today, I'm comfortable opining that that would not be a correct statement, that this provides an alternative track, but it doesn't negate pre-existing bylaws that don't meet the, for example, as Alan said, the 900 square foot requirement.
And if a town wanted to pass their ADU bylaw, they'd be wise to make it the 900 square foot.
Yeah, I, I think if you're drafting something from the beginning, it would be wise to comply with the new definition. Yeah, I agree.
We, we, you, you, John and I, and Sue and I had all discussed the existing draft of Manchester's accessory dwelling unit bylaw. And I think we're coming to the conclusion that 1,200 square feet would still be a simple majority. But I have to admit, after this discussion, I'm not so sure.
I know, I know, I know, Alan.
You go to what the intent of the legislation is, and they want to make it easier to develop accessory dwelling units, but small ones. So do they, do they want, do they, does that imply an intention to make it more difficult to develop larger accessory dwelling units? And I don't, I can't begin to fathom the legislature's intention on that one.
Yeah, well, well put. And I'll just add, when legislation seeks to strip municipalities of local control, the legislation is explicit. You know, there is preemptive language. There is controlling language, and it is not in this series of definitions. So I, I think, I think the way it's drafted, cities and towns are still free to do things the old way, for lack of a better way of saying it, and have these parallel tracks. In fact, I see so many parallel tracks in this legislation. It, it's really confusing as to how cities and towns are going to move forward. It's not going to be a uniform front.
I think, I think, and I'm going to reserve judgment on this until we have a final draft and of our bylaw, and maybe we get some guidance from, from the state DHCD, but I can see a good argument for taking the, if our bylaw remains at 1,200 square feet and not 900, I can see a pretty good argument for taking the conservative, let's play it safe, and vote it by two-thirds.
Yeah, yeah. Why not? Right, right. I agree. Yeah, I mean, I, I think that it gets even more confusing. In fact, let me, let me just move, move it forward just, just to help that along. The quantum of vote also changes in terms of the special permit granting authorities' obligations. So we have three possible special permit granting authorities, board of selectmen, or select board, board of appeals, planning board. So now that quantum of vote, which historically has always been two-thirds, and that is true across the country in many respects, that has now changed in the following relevant scenarios. Multifamily housing within one half mile or one and a half miles of a transportation station, provided that there's a 10% affordability requirement. So these are units that would count on the SHI. Note, that is for a 30-year period. If it's constructed under the traditional 40B approach, the units are perpetually restricted. Here, it's 30 years, and it meets the 80% of median income requirement. Mixed units, mixed use developments in commercial centers, including town and rural centers. This is one of the definitional terms that is very ambiguous. Same thing, no less than 10% below market, 80% median, and then a majority vote as opposed to a two-thirds vote for reduced parking spaces relative to affordable, relative to the residential unit ratio, with the theory that if there's reduced parking, it will allow for additional housing units. The last piece is appeals bonds. And you may remember, many of you who've been on the board for a while, remember that there is a provision in 4817, which this section amends, that does allow a defendant where it's a subdivision plan at stake, does allow a defendant to ask the court to have the plaintiff post a bond. That bond is between $2,000 and $15,000. This legislation now says a special permit, a variance, or a site plan, the defendant, typically the developer, the permit recipient, can ask the court for a bond up to $50,000. And the test is, if the court finds that the harm to the defendant or to the public interest outweighs the financial burden of the bond. And this is the quote that I just think it's worth noting. "The court shall consider the relative merits of the appeal and the relative financial means of the plaintiff and the defendant." We've never seen, never seen legislation like this before. That setting the bond, the judge can determine the relative means of the plaintiff. I mean, how that is relevant to adjudication of an appeal, of course, is, is the question. The bond is up to $50,000. And the theory on a bond is, if you lose, you forfeit the bond. So again, trying to be objective, but there is no place in land use legislation, in my opinion, to make a plaintiff have to post a bond, especially for variance, which everyone on the call knows in Massachusetts, is almost impossible to defend from the municipality's perspective. So a ZBA that grants variances like candy, and there are many communities where that's true, the plaintiff who seeks to challenge that, who would prevail most likely, might have to post a $50,000 bond. I mean, who, who, who among us is willing to do that freely or comfortably? Or in many cases, even able to do that? And yet that is a big part of this, this zoning reform. So tie that back to everything we've just talked about. There's now a bond provision as part of any appeal that a plaintiff could take of a special permit or a site plan, and that ties very much back to the planning board. That, that's my last slide. We can go back to the quantum of vote for zoning amendments here, and that, that kind of puts the focus back on the moderator's role. Like we said, we're not exactly sure on certain petitions that might be majority versus two-thirds. We know, based on the legislation, it's clear that these three are most likely what we're going to start to see. Multifamily, accessory dwelling units, and cluster, the old, the old school cluster approach.
All those as of right.
Did, did I say, did I say as of right? Yeah.
John, I have a question. Going back to that bond, this is Chris. Does that mean a plaintiff, what if the plaintiff is a neighborhood group who does oppose as a variance granted by the board of appeals? Do they post a $50,000 bond?
Well, the court has the, it would be a motion made by the defendant, developer, recipient of the variance, who would ask the court to require a bond of the association. Yeah.
So it can work either way. So it can work either way. If you got turned down by the ZBA, you can file an appeal, or if you're a neighbor, you can file an appeal. And the same rules would apply.
Chris, I'm not sure, I'm not sure I followed that. If, if, if I'm in a butter to a variance application that you're seeking, and you grant, you get the variance, and I choose to appeal the ZBA's issuance of the variance, you would ask the court to require me to post a 50,000, up to a $50,000 bond.
But if I were the developer and they turned me down, and I appealed it, then it would be the reverse.
Well, yeah, except the way it's, it's, great question. Except the way it's written, it's unlikely that you, the developer, would be required to post the bond if the court finds that the harm to the defendant or to the public interest. So remember, now the defendant in that case would be the town. So it's going to be hard for the town to argue that that you should require, be required to post that bond.
Okay.
It, it's, it's going to work in the reverse.
John, it sounds like it's targeted at so many people. It's happened many times in our town where people work hard to get a variance or a special permit, more often a variance. And then a neighbor or a couple of neighbors put some money together and appeal it, which can tie them, it's not a developer, it's quite often just a homeowner. They can tie them up for a year or more and totally throw their plans out the window because, just because they got appealed. Is this sort of a way to, to crack that, to break that down so it doesn't happen as often?
Oh, sure. It's chilling. It, it's chilling. You're going to think twice before you file that appeal. But, 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 but that's, that's really speaks to a different issue. Is who will be able to afford to file an appeal? Those that have the ability to raise 50,000, up to $50,000. But you know, if I'm in a, a poor community, and I'm in a butter who sees a variance that got granted to the property next door to me that doesn't meet the conjunctive criteria. If you ask, Gary, if you're the defendant, you ask for a bond of $50,000, what am I going to do? I'm going to voluntarily dismiss my appeal because I, I can't post it. So it's, it's a, to me, it's a chilling effect on how we do business in the land use community, which is, you don't require a bond because we're supposed to be able to take an appeal if we have standing. And there are mechanisms for you, the recipient of the variance, to knock me out of court, claim I don't have standing, claim I don't have a meritorious case. But to require a cash bond upfront, before we even get to the argument, for many plaintiffs will just be, forget it. I can't do it. That will have its desired effect, but the consequences of that desired effect, to me, are pretty far reaching.
And is this for any kind of appeal? Or just one that involves housing production?
No, any special, any special permit, any special permit, variance, or site plan. So it could be agnostic to housing.
It, it also says it's in the court's discretion that it may require a bond. So a court can say, can, can, could allow, could consider the circumstances and not require that. So it's not a given that 50,000 is the hurdle.
It, it's, it's not, but think about the position is putting the plaintiff in. So
Sure.
I'm a plaintiff. I now have to argue against a downtown Boston law firm and a judge, why I shouldn't have to post the bond. And part of the consideration is my relative financial means. It, it opens up Sue such a slippery slope in terms of who gets to be a plaintiff and who has the wherewithal to be a plaintiff. And that's completely inconsistent with how we've done business in the Commonwealth for decades in lands. To require a plaintiff to have to post the bond is, is, it's chilling. It's chilling. Yeah, you're absolutely right. The court may deny it, but I just spent, you know, $5,000 arguing why the court shouldn't require it. And to me, this is, if, if, if you want to, you generically want to curtail lawsuits in the land use arena, this is the way to do it. Make the plaintiff think that they might have to post a bond, and they're going to think twice about it.
Your point, your point is well taken.
There's another element that I think is almost equally chilling. In saying that the court shall consider the relative merits of the appeal and the relative financial means of the parties, that means there's going to have to be financial disclosure by both parties. That, that in itself, you know, having to submit a financial statement to the court that becomes part of a public record is going to discourage a lot of people.
Yeah, yeah. You know, again, so much for my objectivity. The, the legislation, the legislation is tough enough until you get to this section. And to me, this is the part that pushes it over the edge. This, this is not how we do business until we hit this kind of approach. And what this approach is, is more housing at all costs, in my opinion, and to remove the ability of those who might have a legitimate complaint, remove them from the playing field. And it's very successful. $50,000 is a lot of money, especially compared to the subdivision control law, which is 2 to 15,000. $50,000 for a lot of plaintiffs is, is a ton of cash.
So to be objective, we should just remember how we got here. And that, and that'll be the end of my soapbox.
Well, now that, now that Sue has goaded me into that, we, we got here, we got here because the, because the Commonwealth has rejected planning since its history, and we're one of the few urbanized states that still doesn't have a comprehensive plan requirement that allows zoning to be changed without any connection to a plan. And this legislation is just the meal ticket for every builder and developer in the Commonwealth. Because that's what this does. Talk about opening the floodgates as if this is going to be the, the ticket to reducing the cost of housing. Just the opposite. We're just going to flood the market with more housing. We have not shown that that has reduced housing costs in the Boston metro area. There's no plan requirement. There's no connection to 40B. This is going to raise cities and towns denominators so that your numerator is now going to get reduced and reduced and reduced. And who benefits from that? Not, in my opinion, not cities and towns.
Well, John, I think this, from my take, it addresses what I call the missing middle. It's not necessarily affordable housing, and it's not necessarily market rate, but having multi, encouraging multifamily close to rapid transit, you're going to get randomly priced, a stance, you know, mid-range apartments or whatever other kinds of housing there. I think that's potentially a plus.
Yeah, I, I agree, Gary. The, the thing that's missing, the thing that's missing every time 48 is discussed and 40B and the subdivision control law is where is the guiding document that makes zoning linked to a plan? So that the plan becomes the vision of the community and zoning is the implementing device. We don't have the plan in Massachusetts. All we have is the implementation through zoning. And that's not how the rest of the country works. And that's why we don't have below-market rate housing, because we have one-size-fits-all in 40B. It, it's the be-all and end-all. Housing, housing, housing. What happened to the other 15 critical issues that cities and towns are facing? There's no comprehensive plan requirement. The legislation still ignores requiring cities and towns to have a plan and then have zoning be consistent with that plan. This is just building more housing, as if that's the solution to everything. And, and you know, that's my soapbox, which is, there's more to cities and towns than just housing. Housing might be the critical issue in some cities and towns, but it's not the critical issue in every city and town. They have other critical issues. So let's look at things holistically, not just one thing and the only thing. And, and the worst part of the legislation, you know, I think, in addition to the bond requirement, is the fact that these multifamily districts, this mandatory requirement is done in a vacuum. It's not required to be synced to infrastructure or capital financing or other critical issues that cities and towns are facing. And, and the legislation could have done that. They, they went this far. They could have done what Rhode Island and California and Georgia and Washington and all these other progressive states have done. In fact, they ignored it to give the meal ticket, I think, to the real estate industry. Imagine the pressure that's going to be brought to bear on cities and towns that are not as well equipped to deal with this kind of legislation. It's really going to be remarkable. So you know, I think, I, I think we're kind of in a learning curve. We don't have any guidance from DHCD. We don't know if they're going to be regs or guidelines. If they're guidelines, they're suggestive, not requirements. We don't know. And I don't think, and Alan and I have been talking, you know, if town meeting is not coming up right away, so there is a little bit of time on the re-cod that you're working on to make sure we know whether it's two thirds or majority. So I think we'll have that benefit. But we also don't really know what is going to happen with all these nuances. And I think it's time will tell. And that's what makes it, I think, so difficult for cities and towns now is we have the legislation, it's law, but we're not really quite sure how to pivot and respond, at least in a timely way.
John, this is Mary. Again, can I ask another question going back to the MBTA community?
Sure.
So the, the new wording says a district of reasonable size, and then it goes on to say shall have a minimum gross density, yada, yada, yada. So how do you define reasonable size and then if it gets to that, that the town doesn't overlay district, can we put an overlay around a district that kind of already has apartments or multifamily housing?
So can, can we meet the minimum requirements by including an existing development within it?
Correct.
I, I, great question, Mary. I think so. I don't know what reasonable size means. We don't know. It's a subjective term. I think if the recreated overlay district meets the definitions and the density, I don't see a prohibition against that. And, and let me rephrase your question a little bit. Does it have to be new construction? Or can it be existing construction that meets the requirement? I'm not sure. I don't know. I don't know. And, and it's not at all clear whether or not we could encircle an existing development area to meet it. My gut feeling is no. But, but I can't, I can't tell you why.
Well, you'd think in some sense it would have to be because not every town's going to have open land to, to build.
Well, the theory is 15 years to the acres, you go up. And that, that raises, you know, that raises a very different issue. So my, my answer for now, and I will do, I'll get a better answer for you. My answer for now is no. There needs to be compliance relative to new construction. But I will try and look at it from the other side and see whether we could take, for example, a 30 unit per acre area of pre-existing development and somehow create that as the multifamily housing district. My, my gut feeling is that allows us to circumvent the legislation way too easily.
Yeah.
It doesn't say new construction.
It doesn't. No, I know. I know. I know.
We also, we also don't have a zone that is, that has that within the, within the area that they're looking for. So don't, don't forget it. Can, you can tear things down and build new. So if you try to stretch a zone out to include something that's already built, everything else within that district is going to be potentially open for redevelopment under these new guidelines.
Yeah, and I agree with you, Sue. I think that's right. I think that's right. Yeah, I mean, that is, that is the purpose theoretically of, of the regs. But, but as we all know in this call, you know, the regs can't supersede the legislation. Legislation is this and the regs have to be narrower. And then guidelines have no force of law at all. So if, if what DHCD is talking about are guidelines, and that's what they're talking about, then we're really going to have to revisit this conversation a few months from now. I'll say DHCD has been running the 40B program of the past several years on guidelines, not on regs, because regs have to be promulgated by the agency. Guidelines can be written by anybody. So if that's what they do with this, then we're really going to be scrambling, I think, for a while.
Don't they say a half a mile, as far as defining this zoning district? Is it simply a radius of a half a mile? So you can't like play games with where the district is?
Yeah, the MBTA district says one half, yeah, it's one half mile, within one half mile. But, but then, but then Gary, there is an exception to there is an exception for train.
Ron, can you go back a few?
Yeah, I can do that.
Oh, sorry, John. I forgot.
Yeah, no, no, that's all right.
Cheap bottle washer there.
Because the follow-up question would be homework for Sue to maybe provide us a map showing, a GIS map showing a half mile radius, showing all the, all the buildings, parcels or buildings within a half mile of the train station, so we can get a better, get our brains around the impact of this.
Aren't there multifamilies now existing around the train station? And can't we strategically draw a boundary line? And they haven't said what size it has to be?
Is, I guess it depends on whether the intent is not to allow more multifamily housing or to comply with the intent and to allow more multifamily around the train station. That's the decision, that's the decision the town needs to make.
That's the decision. That's right. And, and it was just Gary, as you were asking the question, I was just looking. Located not more than 0.5 miles from a commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal or bus station, if applicable. So the MBTA communities that don't have any of those things, then it looks like the half a mile radius is not relevant. But if you do have those things, the half mile radius is relevant.
John, this is Christine. I have a question. So within a half a mile, so there's a citizens group and there's a private initiative going on, and that a Butts Powderhouse, I know you're familiar with the town. Then we have Newport Park, and there's also a little bit older multifamily. So if that is within a half a mile, can we then not include the half a mile circle and then it's adjacent to the half a mile? Is that close enough? Does that make sense?
Say they're going, Christina, is the
Elm Street. Elm Street has a proposed, you know, I don't, I think there's maybe 100 units down there. There's new construction. Then there's Newport Park. Could, that's within a half a mile of the train station. Could that multifamily zone start on Elm Street and then go into, say, this Newport Park? The Housing Authority property?
So great question. I read it as not the zone, but the actual physical housing has to be within a half a mile of the, of the station.
Okay, so my next question then is, what if there is no, I mean, half of our mile is water? So that, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. A great question. I, I think that's where the phrase, if applicable, comes in. If you, we don't know. If you can't meet the half mile radius, then can you go outside of the half mile radius? Because the half mile radius is not applicable. I, I don't, the way it's written, I, I cannot, I cannot even fathom to guess. But, but you, you raise a key question, thinking about other MBTA communities where the train station, or at least the platform, there's no way to build this kind of density within a half mile of that platform. And, and yet the legislation seems to suggest that it's not the district, but it's the housing itself has to be, or is to be, a half mile from the platform. I mean, I don't know any other way of defining transportation station other than the platform. You know, where folks get on and off the train.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, well, we spent an hour on this. Any other questions from the board? It sounds like there's more to come on this. I want to thank you both for helping and giving us this talk tonight. I think it was enlightening. And certainly appreciate it.
My, my, my pleasure. Thank you, Alan, as well. And, and yeah, stay tuned. This is, this is as brand new legislation as, as we have, and we, we just don't have the guidance yet.
So I guess, Alan, could you say when should we readdress what town meeting would look like? When is a reasonable time that we should start to talk to you about that?
Well, I, I think ideally, when we have some, some guidance or regulations from DHCD, EDH, DHDC, but we don't, we don't know when that's going to happen. I think in terms of drafting, the more consistent you make the local bylaw provisions with the definitions in the statute, the more likely you'll be able to fit within the majority vote. We talked about accessory dwelling unit. And I'm frankly not sure whether the difference between 900 feet, which is in the statute, and 1,200 minimum, or an axiom rather, and 1,200 feet, which is in the bylaw draft, would, would allow me to take it on a majority vote or would require me to go to two thirds. I had initially been, John and Sue and I were all pretty much in agreement that it would be a majority vote. But because of that discrepancy in the dimension, I'm not sure now. I think that section 8.2, because of the existence of the bonus development provision, is probably within section 192B of the statute, which is the increase in the municipal density or intensity of a particular use. And I think that section 8.3 senior housing is probably also a majority vote, as it's, as it's written now, subject to clarification of what is an eligible location, which is defined very broadly and vaguely in the statute. So, you know, I, I think with respect to all of these, there's a lot of uncertainty. I, I think I'm currently leaning towards a majority vote on all three of those provisions, but it's, this isn't the last word on it. I need to see, see the final versions and, and also see what, if anything, DHCD produces in the way of guidance.
Could be Ron?
Yes, Gary.
Hi, just a comment on this. The accessory dwelling unit issue, of course, we'll have to wait and see what happens, but it seems to me that if we get close to town meeting and we need to push forward our zoning bylaw proposals, we may have to have a backup plan ready to go, and we need to understand how to present that to the town. So that if we had an ADU zoning bylaw proposal that went beyond the 900 square foot guideline, we asked for the two thirds vote and it failed, then we'd have a backup option for the 900 square foot that meets the simple majority requirement. Does that make sense?
It, it makes sense, subject to the question of whether that's a motion for reconsideration, which, which would require two thirds itself. Presumably, if you had the two thirds to, to approve it, you would have the two thirds to reconsider, but it gets a little complicated.
Okay. You know, Ron, if I, can I just throw one more thing out? One, one of the things I'm concerned about, and, and we should all talk about this, is if there even is an option above the 900 square feet. And the, the reason I'm throwing that out there is this legislation could have been clearly written, no municipality shall require or permit more than 900 square feet for an ADU. It doesn't say that. But one way to read this could be that this language is the definition of ADU. Whatever Manchester chooses to call it. If it looks like an ADU, it's an ADU and is governed by this definition, which means by right, no more than 900 square feet. That is, that is a possible take on this that we, we need to just keep talking about. So, you know, Alan, let's talk about it as time goes on, because I, I do wonder whether or not the legislature, legislature ever thought about this. Well, cities and towns could just say, well, forget the 900. We're going to do what we want to do and say two thirds. That would so strip this legislation of any real meaning that they had to have thought that through. It's not at all clear, but it's just a question to think about.
So are you, are you suggesting that the, the legislation takes away the town's option to have an accessory dwelling unit that is more than 900 square feet?
Yeah, I mean, the definition of accessory dwelling unit is, and then it goes on, is not larger than 900 square feet. One way to read this could be this is preemptive. I don't, this is never the way I want to read it, but you could argue that this is preemptive language.
But the only thing they've done is to, is to create a requirement that you approve that particular kind of accessory dwelling unit by a simple majority. I think it would be hard to argue that that takes away the town's option to create an ADU that is larger than 900 square feet by a two thirds vote.
That's the part I'm wrestling with, Alan. I, I, I mean, that's the argument that I want to have. But the, the more I look at it, and the more we talk about it, and the more I've been talking about it, now, now I'm, I'm wondering whether or not this is preemptive.
If this statute didn't exist, the town could vote by two thirds majority to have accessory dwelling at any size it shows.
Correct.
So arguably, what all this legislation has done is to say that where you approve accessory dwelling units that meet the size limitations of the statute, you can do it by majority vote.
In a community that doesn't want to abide by the 900, everything is still two thirds and still a two thirds by special permit. Yeah, that, that, that's the line of thinking that I was agreeing with until about five minutes ago.
I think this conversation demonstrates how, how much uncertainty there is in this town's statute.
Oh, there, yeah, if you haven't had a chance to read it, it, it's worth reading because you, you come up with a thousand different possible scenarios. And of course, we have no case law on it. So yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's, it's, it's not the embodiment of, of clarity at all on any of the sections. On, on, you know, we just covered a few of them. There, there are revisions to 40R, there are revisions to intermunicipal agreements that are now majority vote. There, there's a lot here, and yeah, it is not at all clear in any of the sections.
John, this is Mary again. Can I ask you a general question? We happen to be coming up with a recodification. Communities that are not doing that, would they have to go to vote on these for as a right accessory dwelling unit to put them in? Or is it only once a municipality is changing their bylaws?
No, it, it's, it's, it's agnostic as to, to timing. So the fact that you're going through a re-cod is good timing. But if you weren't, you would still, depending if you're an MBTA community or not, you would have to make changes to your bylaw ordinance in order to comply. Or the way the legislation works, it's, it's by petition. So a landowner who wants to petition to put her land in a multifamily district would argue that it's a majority vote as opposed to a two thirds vote.
But the, the only mandatory change is for MBTA communities to adopt the multifamily district as specified. All the, all the other kinds of changes that we've been talking about, ADUs, whatever. There's no mandate to implement those.
Right. It would be by petition by landowner or by the community at large or by the municipality, right?
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Ron.
Thank you both again.
Thank you all.
So I guess, Alan, in your professional opinion, if we don't have much guidance, is this doable at the full term meeting? Or do we push it off and wait a bit?
Well, I that's that's really not a question for me. That's a question for the board. You've been working on this for a long time. I don't have any sense of when DA CD may issue its regulations or its guidance or what they'll say.
Is it advisable to go through with this guidance?
I'm sorry, you broke up.
Break it up, Christine.
Oh, so my question was, is it advisable to go through with this without guidance?
That's really not a question for me as a moderator. That's a question for the board. It's really a policy question.
Christine, I could, I'll I'll throw out this answer, which is, we will provide the board with an opinion as to, you know, an advisory opinion, which I'll work with Alan in terms of the quantum of vote required, which you get to rely on. So, you know, we're not going to leave you hanging. I'm I'm just being very candid with you tonight, which is, we don't know, you know? But by the time we get to or close to town meeting, we will know and and we will be willing to to make a binding opinion to the moderator for for his consideration.
And for my part, I maybe I didn't understand your question, Christina. I will I will certainly give you a clear answer as we get close to town meeting as to how I will structure the votes. I I thought you were asking whether as a matter of substances, substance and zoning practice, it was advisable to go forward in the absence of guidance.
No. Just should we wait to see how this rolls out? It will it change? Are they going to get pushed back? Or do we just keep plowing as is and or just wait? That was really my question. Just
Did you did you get an answer?
As it comes.
Have we have we answered your question?
Yes, yes, thank you very much. Yes. I have a bad connection. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay.
Thank you both for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Yeah, so I think
I'll speak for both of us. We're we're happy to come back again whenever you have other questions.
Okay, well, maybe when with some answers.
That'd be nice.
All right, thank you both again. All right.
I'm going to sign off then.
All right, Alan, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. So the next two items I'd like to take together. I'd like to have initial discussions on ideas for draft regulations for bylaw changes, design standards and land uses in the LCD. We have a series of slides on the updated regulations proposed by the MAPC for the 40R. Would like to take have the board take a look at them and discuss acceptance or changes. Or do we want to go out on our own and not create a 40R and propose our own regulations, design standards and land uses? So I think I have a, I know I have a slide presentation I will share with the group. Just give me a minute. Can everybody see this?
Yes.
Yes.
Can we can run, but if you can put your cursor on the little slide element, which is close to the the bottom right hand side where you would start the slideshow, then it will take up the whole screen. If you if you want to do that, it just makes it a little larger.
Okay, it's taken up my whole screen, but where where is this down here?
So on on the page itself, right next to the far to the right hand side, it looks like a little screen, like a projector screen, no, bottom right. You're in the upper left. Keep going a little to the left, no, a little to the left, a little to the left or the other side, the other left, right there. Click on that. Does it allow you to click on that?
Yeah. But I am showing my full
Interesting. All right. Well, if it doesn't bother anyone else, I guess it's all fine with me.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, yeah, Sue, this is a statement from our master plan, just for
Oh, you need to advance it.
I see, I'm showing this.
Yes, yes, yes.
Hold on, I'm sharing the wrong screen.
There you go. You got it.
Okay, sorry. Okay, so this is our our master plan statements. So Sue, did you want to just go over some of these restrictions or regulations from MHD?
Sure. So these are regulations, draft regulations that the board has had for some time. And I think we just need to get to the point where we either agree what in general is in them or offer a change so that MAPC can finalize these draft documents. And then we can look at them in their entirety and either say, yes, these work and we would like to go forward with the 40R. Or no, they don't work, but hopefully the regulations would work for us other than the byright housing in another overlay zoning zone or as the underlying zoning regulations. So we can talk about the options at the end, but I think it's a good idea just to to get to agreement on what should be in the regulations of the 40R. Does that make sense?
Yeah, did we receive this PowerPoint?
No, I just made this today for Ron, so he wouldn't have to scramble through a bunch of documents. But these this, these are just the regulations that are kind of the summaries, the the valiant, the the salient points that are I'm summarizing the regulations because there, as you know, there, there's quite a few pages. So I've just pulled out the regulations that are kind of dimensional or that are more than just, you know, other than just boilerplate language. So but it's all, it's all in the regulations. So for example, a project has to a project can be either commercial mixed use area, a low end packed residential area or a combination of both. So for example, is that a regulation that we think makes sense? Or would you want to make any change to that? Because a district will be, could be a number of projects, any number of projects.
So Sue, the these are, these are like a starting point or suggested regulations? They don't require this in order to meet the state standards for 40R?
These are the regulations. These, this is out of the draft bylaw that 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 has been shared. So I'm just pulling out some of the things to say, do you agree with these or do you want to make any changes? For example, the next one.
Meaning that that it's, we can push and pull and modify.
Yes, so that's the purpose of this discussion.
I'm trying to
Okay, do you want to, do you like it as it is written or are the changes that you may would like to see? So there's the 13 residential units before 20% are required to be affordable. So in other words, if something had less than that, if it was only a 12 unit development, the 20% affordability would not be required.
Can we run through all of them first and then come back and?
Thanks, Chris. Yeah, I was going to say, like, this is presuming, I guess, if we're all leaning towards this direction. So not that I'm not at this point, but I think we need to go through. I really wasn't from this agenda. I didn't think that we were, you know, picking and pulling tonight.
We're not going to make any final decisions. We just wanted to discuss some of these things.
Well, if there were just, if if the board, for example, wanted to change some of these dimensional regulations or thought something didn't fit, I would take that back to MAPC. I I think at some point we need to say, you know, are these the right regulations or are they not either within this district or you know, whether in this overlay district or district generally. But do you want to just read through them? And I mean, they're I tried to make them
Do you have some like talking points that we can like concentrate on? I mean, this is just, I think, honestly, like a lot to digest. Like I wasn't prepared to pull this apart tonight. So are there things that you're looking for specifically? I mean, you, I guess, put this on here to get something out of it. So is there something specific that you're looking for us for?
Yes, so these are the things that I wanted your feedback on. So Ron, can you just go through a couple? So there's this page. There's the how many units are by right, the types of housing that would be required, the unit size that it's limited to. These are all variables that MAPC plugged in, having listened to the community. There's the parking count. The next one, there's the open, there's the signs, there's open space requirements. I think it stops right there. So those are the only things. It's not, I know it looks like a lot. It's not a lot unless there's massive discussion on each one. And this isn't the last chance that you would have, but I'm just trying to understand is, are the regulations that are out there, are they appropriate? Or is there anything that is just a a red flag or a red herring that we would want to change?
Ron, this is Mary. I have a couple of questions.
Yes, Mary.
So just to step back for a moment, have we, as a board, decided definitively that we are moving forward and want to go forward with the draft regulations for 40R? I know I had tried to get on the agenda that we investigate other potentials within the LCD, simply changing bylaws to allow more certain types of development, you know, various options. So I'm I'm unclear why we're moving forward with the the draft regulations at this point without that higher level discussion. But I think if we're going to then decide to move forward with this, then we go, just like we do with the zoning recodification, we go page by page and discuss it as a board.
So Ron, maybe you want to flip the agenda. So the I didn't know if you wanted to have the discussion about whether this was right or wrong without knowing what it was. But if you want to flip the agenda and talk about your options first, then I don't, that's perfectly fine with me. I think, keep going.
So to be honest, in the folder, there was a memo from MAPC that laid out the three options. I mean, that's where I thought this conversation was going tonight. We were going to discuss the three different options. That's what I was prepared to talk about. I wasn't prepared to get down into the nitty gritty. So I, that's just my two cents.
Ron, I think there's, there's more. Can you keep going? I think they're looking for these three. So the next, the three slides
Yep.
lay out the options. And as I said, I
Yep.
Okay.
So and to clarify, why is the MAPC laying out the town's options? They're just slated to look at a 40R and then the the board would decide what are potential benefits or drawbacks for any other options?
That's correct.
So so it looks like they're trying to say, okay, for for 40R, here's the benefits and the drawbacks for just redoing your bylaw. Here's the benefits and the drawback. So overstepping their bounds. So I'm not clear on that.
Ron, can I clarify?
Yes, go ahead, Sue.
So we received, we received funding and MAPC is funded to do a certain scope of work. When the town was met with the 40B and then there was some reluctance to go forward with the 40R because of the density and the housing by right, MAPC, I asked if they could pivot or make changes to their scope, get a, just a draft of the regulations and what they were going to do, but then to use the rest of their scope to help us with a different bylaw, if that was what the board wanted to do. So they have not overstepped their bounds in any way. They're just, I've asked them to lay out what the options were and how it could affect their project that they're doing. So they're not pretending to make any decisions. They're just saying with our scope, here's what we could do. Here are the benefits and here are the drawbacks of each type. Does any other board members have questions about that? Explanation or?
No, I think it's been clear for a while that we're getting basically free help and we can pick and choose what we want to make make use of from it. If we don't go down the road of a 40R, well, we have a whole bunch of issues worked up and lists and we can use that as a framework instead of having to sit down and write it all ourselves, which is takes a lot of time, I've found, when you try to write things. So this, this, I thought this was made really clear a long time ago. This is basically a bunch of freebies. And that's a good thing. And these documents here are not new to me. You gave these to us quite a long time ago, if I remember correctly. And I've looked through them occasionally, but not studied them item by item. I would say that some of the earlier slides you showed with no setbacks makes for a pretty urban development. That would, that would require a bit of thinking. And the number 255 units, I think you've explained to us once, is based roughly on a maximum build out that I think the Mr. Semboli was talking about, because that number derives from the amount of square footage of commercial, right?
Well, if we're going to go back into the weeds, that would, that number came about because it was the lowest density required by the 40R.
Right.
But I can, we can talk about the weeds or we can talk about options and I don't have a, I don't have
So I'd like to talk about just, just high level. If we didn't use the 40R at this moment, have you had conversations with Gordon College? Would this, if we just, you know, just use the regulation, would that encompass that area? Have you had conversations with that area? Are we doing another overlay? I guess I'm not sure exactly what LCD means. Is it the district that is under this grant or is it the entire LCD?
So the the options that the town has, other than the 40R, which we're pretty clear where we know that is and what those benefits are. We also know the drawbacks are. We can go through that and do that with with MAPC's help. Ron, can you go to the next one? But the other choices that we have are that we can create our own overlay district that could be the same or similar to what is proposed under the 40R. Or it could be something different, but a non 40R overlay, of course, wouldn't be subject to the as right requirement for the housing. So we could have it be all commercial, we could have it be commercial or residential and residential. Really, kind of the ball is in our court and we could make it be whatever we want it to be. In terms of what MAPC has said to consider in terms of how they could assist, it said they could use their remaining budget to update the bylaw and the design guidelines, which is why I kind of wanted to get to a place with the 40R ones to say this is, this is, this is what we would like to see up there, or this isn't what we would like to see, or this is what we'd like to change, because then we already have a base of what our overlay district regulations could be, because whether it's 40R or our own overlay district, we'll need to create those regulations. We need to create that framework, that development would be allowed and under. Ron, can you go to the next one? The other choice is to change the underlying zoning. So there you really have two options too. You can do the underlying zoning in the entire district. Right now, it's the district has one set of rules with the exception of some uses are allowed and they describe it, I think, as west of Upper Pine Street or the Pipeline Road. So we could change the base zoning throughout the whole district, or you could further divide the district into two districts, east and west, or however you would name them and make the zoning different in each of them. And how, what he said in terms of things to consider is that, you know, it's gonna create some extra effort if we create new base district zoning, especially if we create two different zones. So there's some complications to it, but they would still provide some assistance to the town and we would pick up the slack for what they couldn't do. Lots of, lots to consider here.
So I guess back to my question, have you had any recent conversations with Gordon College?
I've had not had recent conversations with Gordon College.
Okay, so I guess at this point, I'm not sure the rest of the board, but if we're gonna do, I, I think at this point, we have the forty R, we're talking about the MBTA, I think we have Manchester Housing redevelopment. I think we have a lot of housing on our plate. The housing portion of this doesn't really excite me. I guess I could be convinced, but that portion, I mean, we definitely need commercial. I think we need to go forward with some commercial regulations. I'm not sure if the forty R at this moment in a year, I could think something differently when everything plays out. Right now, it does, to me, it doesn't make sense. So I was wondering if we should be expanding this to cover the whole L C. It seems like we've paid a little attention to Mr. Symboli. Do we need to pay attention to the other half of the L C D?
Seems to me the other half of the seat of the L C D is until Gordon College comes to us with a proposal to do something, we'd just be wasting our time. And we do have Mr. Symboli, you know, engaged, and I think we have to focus our attention on on the land that he controls and the abutting property along there. So whether it's an overlay district
Not like, I'm, Chris, I understand that and I completely agree with you on that, but I think Gordon College did come and wanted to talk, but it's been a while. So I just wanna make sure that we're not leaving them out. They were at the master plan meeting when we had conversations. They were there. I actually had a conversation with the president. So I wanna make sure that we're doing our job and that we're not leaving portions out. I mean, I'm not saying without reason, bringing this conversation up. So I do think we're paying a bit more attention to Mr. Symboli, which is fine. But I do think we need to circle back and make sure that we're doing this. We think about the whole project.
So I, I've had conversations with Gordon College, but not in terms of a development proposal. They've kept me in the loop in terms of what they've done to assess their property. They created a a capacity study to see how much they thought could fit there. They've, and then they went through the marketing analysis to see what the market might bear there. And then, of course, they've had someone kind of looking at their property in terms of whether it could fit, but they've not come back to say, and they know that they have an open door to come back if they have a proposal, but they have not come back to say, you know, we have a clear idea of where we want to go yet. So
But I think that might be the next step, though. If we are looking at just changing the zoning, is there something that you, I mean, that's what we're actually asking Mr. Symboli, right? This is what you wanna do. We're gonna consider these ideas. I just don't know why we're not doing that on the other side. I don't know why we don't have the whole picture if we're gonna do this. That's all I'm saying.
Well, we, we have asked them. They just, they don't, they don't have a clear vision of what they want to do. They've only said that they would appreciate changes to zoning that would, you know, allow them to actively manage their property, but they don't, they don't have a clear idea or a clear vision or a clear plan of what they want to do.
So if you've had a conversation with them that we are in the process of changing zoning and that's their answer? I mean, I really do think
Yes, yes, they know.
The biotech, when those people came before us, where were they thinking of citing that? Can you refresh my memory?
Well, they looked, they looked at the Gordon College property.
I'm kind of curious, though, which part of it? I've got a map in front of me on my table. Is it the most easternly part of Gordon College land or where?
No, the only place that has real access would be closer to Pine Street Extension, because that's where they would need to access it from. So it would be closer to that side.
Excuse me, Ron.
Yes, Mr. Russell.
This is just an add-on or clarification. If I may ask Sue a question regarding Christina's comments.
Yes.
So Sue, regardless of what's may or may not be in the works for Gordon College versus what we've been looking at in the forty R area. If we either were to change the base zoning or if we were to simply create new overlay districts, there's nothing that prevents us from creating two completely different overlays districts, correct?
Correct.
So, so we could we could continue with our work in the area we have, but then we could also pick up a different type of overlay discussion for the Gordon College part of the L C D.
You could. You could also change the underlying zoning and have a district if you knew that there were certain elements that you would want changed regardless. For example, yeah, for example, the heights, which we know requires the height limit really mandates that development spread out. And if we know that that's not something that's compatible with good planning practices and protecting our resources, then you might want to change that even while you do a, an overlay district in another area. Because even if it, even if, you know, even in the overlay district, the underlying zoning can still, can still be consider it, considered. It can still, someone can still ask for a special permit under the underlying zoning.
Okay, so may I ask a follow-up question? In your opinion, in terms of complexity or board hours, staff hours, complexity, to do something other than the forty R, like an overlay district, how complex is it to do changes to the base zoning and an overlay district at the same time? Can you package them kind of together as a discussion and a proposal to the town? Or is there something about changing the base zoning that is just more unpalatable?
Well, in my opinion, I think it just depends on the consensus in the community and on the board. It doesn't, none of it has to be complicated if you're in agreement as to the changes that you want to make, because it's, you know. But you have to, you have to agree on where you want to go and then it, and then it can flow fairly simply.
Okay, thank you.
So it's complicated. I don't know.
If we go back and look at the uses, all the proposed uses and yeah, that one. So I think we have to start here before we can figure out what the underlying zoning should be. And talk about each of these things and see where we are.
I, I agree with Chris. I, could I, this is Mary. Could I just take it back to a higher level again? I think it would be a good idea to ask Gordon College to come in and even if they don't have plans to give us some sort of idea what they're looking at or what they're thinking. That would help in the planning and taking even a further step back. I, I don't feel as a planning board, we've actually received a clear financial picture from FinCom of what number of revenue we're looking to generate. So we're, we're scrambling and doing all this planning, but you know, on one hand, FinCom says we're, we're in, on good, solid footing and then and we've increased spending for capital expenditures and infrastructure, but there's still this unknown amount of money generated revenue that we're trying to get to. So I think we need a, an understanding of what that generated revenue needs to be. And I do agree with Christine, and this, this will be in my FinCom recap at the end, but kind of focusing on commercial development seems to be the direction that I keep hearing from residents. So it's something for us to look at as well.
Targeted two to three million dollars. And from the people I've spoken to in the last few weeks, it seems like a pretty good working number is, is that we're trying to get three million dollars in tax revenue. It seems to be a pretty comfortable number and it, and it, that all started in the master plan and has evolved since then. You can't really start with three million and work backwards.
Well, that, that two to three million has already been debunked because the FinCom increased the amount of spending. So the town administrator, that's no longer needed, that two to three million a year for fifteen million for fifteen years. So, so there's a, a new target. I just need to know what that is coming from FinCom. The master plan number is, is obsolete at this point because it's already shifted.
Are you trying to say that the target is a higher number or lower?
It would be lower. I mean, there's, there's wish list of things, but there's not that annual two to three million revenue that they laid out in the master plan that is not currently required.
Excuse me, Mary, but just the DPW alone was alluding to needing one, at least one point two million more a year than what he's currently spending. So I think you kind of quickly get up to the two or three million dollar range, but maybe Greg Fettersville could weigh in on that or someone, Sue.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying is we need, we need you know, that report, that analysis. We can't, it's not, it shouldn't be a guessing game.
Ron, I'm happy to respond if you'd like.
Yes, go ahead, Greg.
So that two to three million in additional revenue for taxes is certainly a good number to be working with. In the next, you know, for the next, what is now twelve, thirteen years, spending three million, we're on, we are on target to do that. But that is not addressing any of the long-term needs of facility expansion, seawall development that is gonna be needed to protect us against sea level rise. There is a long list of needs that go beyond the twelve-year time horizon, where you need significant new revenues if you wanna maintain the town the way it is today. So again, that, that two to three million dollars in additional tax revenue is a good working number as you look for the long term.
Ron, I have a comment, if I may.
Yes, Mr. Russell.
Yeah, I, I do think that the revenue and potential revenue shouldn't be left out of the conversation, but to think that we have a magic number to meet with development is, I don't, that shouldn't, that shouldn't guide our planning. Our planning should be guided by what uses the community wants to see, what they'll accept, what kind of density. All those conversations, revenue may be a part of that conversation, but remember, we're, we're, what we're trying to do is zoning to allow development to happen. There's no guarantee that it will. So there's no way that we can say that, you know, at year five, X amount of buildings will have been constructed and they'll be generating X amount of ren- revenue. So I, I prefer to continue to focus on the uses, density and layout that the community wants to see.
And I agree with that, Gary, that out of the master plan survey, I mean, people wanted development in the L C D purely as a means to generate revenue. So we're kind of, we're kind of looking at it backwards. They, they didn't want increased density, but they wanted, they would be fine with some commercial development in the limited commercial district to generate revenue. So I'm just trying to get that clear financial picture. And then we, and then it is, you know, more conversations with the residents of what, what they would feel comfortable with.
But again, we're not planning a development here. We're just trying to change the zoning and you know, just right away, office buildings are already allowed there, but no one's built an office except for the medical office building, and that was years and years ago. So what we have to do is figure out what is marketable, what's feasible financially and how it all fits together in that location. So for example, hotel. Well, with a standalone hotel probably doesn't work there, but maybe in conjunction with the MAC, it does. If it's the right size. Assisted living might be a great location for assisted living because it would, it would generate people from all over Cape Ben and, you know, towards Beverly and Salem because of its location. And if you're gonna do assisted living, then maybe some independent senior housing around it would feed the assisted living. And those two would be in, create some synergy with the MAC. So that's the kind of planning we have to do here, but you can't just say, well, we're gonna zone this for eighty units of assisted living and make sure that happens. All we can do is say that if somebody comes into the proposal for assisted living, then these are the requirements for what it should be. It's setback, it's height. It's, you know, how accessibility, and we haven't even touched the, the elephant in the room, which is how do you provide water and sewer to these things? That's gotta be discussed as well. There's just a whole lot of things that have to
Oh, it's not an elephant in the room. It's here, Chris. It's not an elephant. I keep asking about that. No, I agree with you. I think just the bottom line is that I'm not comfortable at this point talking about housing. And maybe, like you said in that suggestion, some independence in your housing to support assisted living, the idea of the forty R at this point makes me a bit nervous.
Well, I think part of that depends on what happens with the forty B, which
Exactly, it does.
The forty B goes away for some reason, then I think that it's, the forty R makes perfect sense.
And I think part of what contributes to this conversation, which is, it's very, very much gonna be a cyclical conversation. It's not linear. When, I'm hoping Anthony Symboli will, will spend some money and get some actual, if he has a professional consultant, let's say, for assisted living, who says to him, this immediate region, this immediate, immediate portion of Cape Ben could really use six hundred and twenty assisted living units, that's pretty interesting information to know. And if he's proposing to build whatever, two hundred-ish or something, it makes more sense. If that's not the case, all that information is gonna be helpful and I hope he'll come with some information about the need in our area for hotel also and approximate size of it, as well as offices. I mean, it seems to me to be pretty easy to attract some of the lucrative tenants. A lot of them are medical in some of the office buildings in Beverly and that seems to be kind of a no-brainer, but I'm hoping that he will hire some consultants and give us some information and projections that we can feed into all this. I mean, if there's a lot of needs, it says one thing. If the needs are sort of broken up into different use types, it, it, it sort of says something else.
But what we don't wanna do is allow uses that compete with each other. So for example, you don't want a nuclear research facility next to your assisted living. We gotta make sure that the plan, that the zoning accomplishes that.
Yeah, if I may, Chris, that's absolutely right. And something else you said earlier about the forty R, I completely agree, which is how we, we ended up spending so much time trying to get the forty R discussions going is that you know, frankly, the forty B plopped down and created a mess for everyone. And it clouded the issues, especially with so many residential apartment units being proposed at once in one place. So I think that really clouded the issue of the forty R. It would be an easier discussion if the forty B didn't exist, but unfortunately it does. But in terms of the uses, I, I do wanna remind folks that through the master plan process and then subsequently through many discussions regarding potential forty R is that it's not just revenue potential and revenue earning uses, but it's uses that would produce revenue and not tax other services. So not adding burden to the school system So not adding burden to the school system or, um, uh, emergency services. So there are other issues at play there, and that's one reason why senior living, uh, kind of rose up through the, the discussions of uses originally because, um, if it's senior living, you don't have kids. So you're not, you're not adding to the school system. So that's part of this conversation as well. What uses, um, can add revenue or, um, provide a service or, or a use that we're not seeing in other areas of town, um, because it's unpalatable in other places.
And the other problem is affordable senior living next to assisted living won't provide the synergy because the people living in the subsidized or affordable senior units wouldn't be able to afford assisted living. So it won't be, it won't be a feeder. So we got to be careful about how we're, how we're planning this again.
And I think at the same time, the quality of what we're creating there, is it, it, do we view it as sort of a type of an industrial park or office park where there's a, a MAC, uh, extra recreational uses? And then down the street, um, there's assisted living and some independent living, sort of, um, you know, loosely called ghettoized or separated uses just stuck there? Or do we want to actually create, um, more, a more holistic neighborhood, uh, uh, a neighborhood in town that isn't competing with downtown, but is still, um, a place where people might want to actually live? And that, that picture was painted earlier when the, um, MAPC came and did this slideshow presentation to us with a hypothetical site plan. Um, it was more of a cohesive neighborhood. So we do have to keep that in our mind because I think, uh, some of the conversation tonight is really pointing towards a industrial park sort of approach to land development there, which is not, you know, that, well, exciting.
So I, I think just to pull that together, Ron, if I might, I think, um, if the, if the intent is to, or if we know that the, the developer, um, if we know Mr. Symboli wants to develop, um, an assisted living facility and, and, um, housing that feeds into that, then it doesn't make sense to, to work towards a, um, an industrial type complex because you want to, um, allow that to be a real community and you don't want it to be, by, you know, you don't want it to be just a bunch of uses, um, put together up there, um, without any, cohesion or without, you know, have one feeding the other. So I think he's worked hard to put together a plan that works, has the uses working together and, um, and that makes sense. If the assisted living facility isn't part of it and housing isn't part of it, then I think we're having a different conversation about what the, what the area in total looks like. So again, another kind of decision. But, you know, if Mr. Symboli, you know, is firm and is very interested in the assisted living, and we know that's a, I'm a good revenue producer, then I think it makes sense to allow that type of development.
But he's not the only land up there, right?
No, no, the town is the other, the town and Mr. Brady are the principal, other principal owners up there.
So what about the biotech, Sue? Is there, I keep thinking it's really tempting to spot zone and allow that to occur. And there'll be one facility somewhere. I don't even know how big it will be, how much land it would take up. I think it would be great if we had a site visit as a board and invite the public, but to, to go out and look at the east, the eastern part of the LCD and then do another, another visit maybe to the western part. Because we talking about this maybe a little bit too much in abstract, and we would understand the environment there as well as how much land's already been developed, et cetera. The visibility, distance from 128. Excuse me, Ron.
So, Ron, I, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Gary first.
Uh, just a, a quick, uh, question for Sue. Gary mentioned spot zoning, which triggered a memory that someone recently, um, in the neighborhood asked why, uh, we couldn't allow Mr. Symboli to, uh, to develop his project just through zoning variances. And I was trying to explain that, um, you know, to get a variance through zoning, it has to be something that is allowed, but has difficulties. And I was trying to explain the, the whole thing, why when the zoning itself is your, um, is your problem, you can't appeal that as, um, a, a difficulty. So, but is there a way that we could, if, to add to the discussion of options, to create zones just for, um, Mr. Symboli's project?
Well, in essence, that's what a, an overlay zone is, an overlay district. So, but it, you know, it doesn't have to stop at his. Mr. Brady has indicated he'd be happy to, um, be a phase two of his project. So, and the, and the other use, the other, the other folks there are the town. So I think it would be easy enough to create an overlay district that allows him to do that and, and then take time with the rest to see what it, what you want.
Thank you. I'm just, I'm just trying to, um, get ahead of, um, perhaps questions and comments that might come from the community, which one of those may be, um, sure, we want the MAC part to go ahead, but we don't know anything else that we want to have happen there. So just not touch that. Just trying to get ahead of possibilities that we're going to have to respond to. Thank you.
Yes, anyone else?
Oh, yeah, Ron, I had a question.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Um, so talking about the different properties, um, so it's not just the, the MAC owner. So it's, it's town property, Brady property. This came up at the 40B meeting that last week, I guess it was, that some of the land, um, if the 40B goes through, some of the land can revert back to the original owners. Has there been any discussions about that land? I don't know how much acreage that is, but that's within this, at least the scoped out 40R currently. Has there been any discussions about development there?
Um, I really don't, I don't know. My understanding is that it was a very small piece that would revert back. But I, it wouldn't have, it wouldn't have anything to do with the 40R because if the 40B doesn't go through, then that purchase and sale is null and void. And you could either put the entire property in an overlay district or you could leave it out. And my guess is that you might want to leave it out.
I just mean if the 40B does go through, has that property owner had any discussions about developing?
Oh, no, no, they wouldn't have any. I don't, I haven't seen a map that shows what land would be reverted, but I would highly doubt that it would be, have any access to it. But, uh, no, there's been no discussion of any further development there.
Okay, so we're just talking about the one side of one, of, uh, School Street.
I think you may be just talking about one side, most be, maybe the most palatable.
And also Pine Street, Upper Pine Street, right?
In, in a, in a different, either a different district or outside the district and change underlying zoning, I would think.
Should we go through these one by one?
The uses?
The, the uses?
Yes.
We could.
You want to vote them all up and down as we go through?
I, I just, I'm just don't know
Yeah.
what the objective is here.
Um, on this list that I, uh, created, the, um, as, you've got it labeled as proposed. That was what the MAPC laid out as a list of uses that would be sympathetic to a smart growth overlay district of, of 40R, correct?
Correct.
Because that's not the only group here that was proposed. Mr. Symboli made a proposal also.
Right. That's on the, that's on the next, that's on the next slide.
And I'm, I'm wondering, why are these all broken up so separately? There's sort of, there's residential, a group of these are residential types and a group of these are office, commercial, call it commercial types. Why is it important to talk about pet services, for example? It's just a commercial function. Someone might rent a space and take care of dogs. I mean.
Well, we didn't put them. It's just, it's, it's, it's a more, um, detailed list than commercial and residential. So just like hotel is commercial, we broke that out. We put pet services in. Go ahead.
It's alphabetical. It's an alphabetical order.
Yes, I, I put it in alphabetical order just so it didn't seem to be.
I guess my point is, in thinking about this, it may help to sort of put them under umbrellas. You know, this, these are types of commercial uses. These are types of, of residential uses. Um, I'm not sure what else is in there. There's re- research, which is a type of commercial, I guess.
So it's all research. I mean, it's all residential with, or commercial with the exception of the residential. So that would be a pretty short.
Right. Everything above that and the last one.
Maybe the easiest thing is, are there any uses there that you don't think are appropriate under any of the scenarios, either within an overlay district or within underlying or within Mr. Symboli's?
Yeah. Uh, I would say no to single residential.
Agree.
So as you know, Mr. Symboli had that in his land as a, and I'm not saying, disagree with you. I'm just saying that's part of the, what was, um, conceived with Mr. Symboli's plan. The, um, independent living units were, um, single family, whether detached, attached. They were still independent. They were still single family. Just wanted to clarify.
Okay. Well, I just, I would not want to see that area, um, become another zone for, you know, a, a few very large homes.
Yes.
And to take that one step further, we should really be thinking or talking about, um, building typology. Like, um, if we're going to have residential structures, do we, how do we feel about duplexes? How do we feel about attached or clustered townhouses? It makes much better use of the land. Um, how do we feel about trying to make them a little more vertical? So that, um, do you want to encourage smaller footprints and, uh, maybe slightly taller buildings? Again, to use up less land.
Too bad. It's more than half a mile from the train.
Yeah, right. So what, now what we're getting down into is exactly the regulations that we were trying to start with because that's what puts that in context. So when it talks about residential, it says, these are the types that we're, um, proposing or looking to propose. And these are, you know, these are the, how we would want them oriented, how we want them separated. So that's why, as you know, this is not a, a linear discussion, but you have to keep going back and forth. Yes, we would accept single-family residential if it was at this density or of this typology. So, um, I get it. It's messy. We appreciate you, um, biting it off in whatever chunks you can.
It's also complicated because maybe a brewery would be great there, but not next to an assisted living facility.
Right.
I don't know about that, Chris. I was thinking the opposite.
About your old age.
Can roll out and walk right home. It's perfect.
This question.
Brewery.
Can I throw out this question? As far as an office building, which I'm pretty fond of because they produce a lot of tax revenue and don't necessarily have to be that huge or tall. Um, how do people feel about, um, standalone, say, four-story office building versus maybe something that's more conducive to a mix, to a main street, where you might have some retail or, or something on the ground floor and offices above, building, again, a building typology sort of question?
Uh, this is Mary. My, my comment on that, I, I think that all sounds good and great. Um, I think it does kind of go back to needing that, at least some sort of economic market analysis. Uh, because of COVID, businesses aren't operating the way they used to. Are, are people looking for a lot of office space? Are they looking for new retail space? I mean, is that something that's going to, um, carry this forward for the next 20, 30, 40 years?
So again, you know, just saying that we want office or not want office isn't going to create it. We're just, whether or not we allow it. And, and maybe one of the things in here should be, as proposed, would be mixed use office and other, you know, other things. Office and light industrial and even residential in office.
It's a, it's a good question, Mary. It's a valid question. It's, I think it's fairly easy to answer also. I mean, there's a lot of people that do nothing but market leasing, leasing spaces. I mean, um, Cummings Company has their own team of leasing agents. You could pretty easily find out what the demand is now. Uh, I think Sue said to me once that she has a, a, a way to, to find out what the market, uh, bears. But it's part of what we asked Symboli too, was to say, don't just throw the use out at us. Uh, uh, do a little bit of research, talk to consult, your own consultants and tell us what's the demand.
Well, I think it's changing. I think Mary's right. I think.
And I was, go ahead, Ron. I'm sorry.
I, I think this COVID thing has awakened people to a different type of, uh, work environment. I know people have gotten used to working at home and, uh, you know, just polling people I work with. Half of them aren't coming back, even when the office does open. So I don't know if it's a, if it's going to be a growing thing or not.
So Ron, I would like to piggyback on that. I've actually been, read quite a few articles on the assisted living. Same thing. People are concerned about their parents, what they went through in COVID, and they're finding, they're building accessory dwelling units and finding ways to keep those older people and have care come to them. So we, we have to be proactive and think about things this way that, you know, even once the baby boom is done, what can that assisted living turn into? I don't know. I guess that's their problem then, but I, I, we just went through a pandemic. We need to think about it. I, I'm not sure people are going back to offices and the assisted living is same thing. People are trying to keep people home if they can. I think like the memory center is always going to have a draw, right? But.
Uh, Christine, keep in mind, there's such a thing as like service offices. Uh, the dermatologist I went to recently, the allerg- allerg- allergist, you know, they're in an office building renting space and they're servicing the aging population. There's, there's a ton of them in our area, as you probably know, and they're all scattered around. You know, but this kind of information, I think, shouldn't be that hard to find, the demand.
All right.
Well, as Chris said, we're just allowing it, whether someone wants to build one there or not, that would be, I guess, the point.
And we're kind of lucky that there's just one, really one big property owner. It seems to me we need to be, uh, try to accommodate what he wants to do as, as, as long as it makes sense.
Uh, excuse me, Ron?
Yes, Gary's.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, but, um, I have to hop off. I had another call. I was supposed to make it, um, soon. I was planning for just two hours. Um, but before I hop off, can we, could you and or Sue, um, give us some guidance about our next steps for this part of it? And you, you probably can't do this technically, but, um, I'm totally fine with the minutes. I vote yes.
All right, um, maybe we are a little overtime here. So for next steps, I think we, we need to think about this, uh, you know, what we, what we want to allow and how we want to change the zoning up there. Uh, I expect that we'll get some answers to the questions we sent to, uh, Symboli for our next meeting. So, uh, we'll ha- we'll, we'll have a little more guidance on which, what he's thinking about. I don't know. Any other suggestions, Sue, on this? Um, do we want to, um, you know, talk about the 40R versus going to our own, uh?
So, so I think we've moved, I think we've moved forward a little. I think I can say with some confidence that, um, the 40R is in trouble in terms of its public support at this time. In terms of its public support at this time. I think what I would like to, to have folks give some thought as to what we would like, how we would like to finish up that project, because I do think that we have an opportunity to use that time to be, to help us to the next step, whatever that is. So I don't, you know, we don't, you don't have to take a vote tonight or, but I think that's the, that's the next thing that we need to decide on is what is that option? I'm also, as I mentioned in that, in the last 40R discussion, we said that we would reach out to the other boards and see if they had a preference as well of, and to weigh in on the 40R guidelines and regulations. So we also need to say, do we want to come to a more finalized version of those? And I can create a tool, much like we did with the, with the recodification and get people to kind of send in any suggested changes for each division, each section. Or, or you can do it in a meeting again, just as a, it's a little time consuming, I know.
Sue, I've got a crazy idea. Would it help us to maybe do, to do our own little private survey? That we take this list here of the uses, it's in our, it's in our SharePoint, the document. Maybe ask everybody to put a checkmark next to which uses they're fond of, or if there's missing ones, write them in and send them to you to compile sort of a survey?
We could do that with the uses and or the other, all the other regulations that go with it.
Can we just bring this, a board, is that what you were suggesting, like a multi-board meeting?
I wasn't, I was going to get, my thought was to get, first get the input from the other boards and committees. Then came up with a kind of final draft of this and then have a, a multi-board committee meeting. But I'm open to, I'm open to suggestions. There's some, I think, some that feel like a, more information from the finance committee might be needed to move forward, but I'm happy to.
I just feel like, I think a conversation before input, that we can bounce things off of each other and talk about it, is gonna be more helpful than just tossing things in, in vacuums and not getting it out. I feel like, I don't know, ZBA, BOS, I think we should all talk about it. So we're hearing what everyone else is thinking versus just trying to put our own thoughts down, but that's just my opinion.
I think it's a little premature. I think we're gonna really learn a lot. If, if, if Mr. Symboli gives us the kind of information we asked for, that'll inform us. If we could, we could do a little, one of our own surveys and get an idea of which land uses we think make sense. To have a multi-board meeting with more information in our brains and on the table is better than just talking in vagaries about the district. And I'll suggest again that we do.
I thought Sue was referring to our changes to the zoning regulations, not uses.
Um, excuse me, Ron, I'm sorry, I do have to go now. I apologize. Thanks, everyone. And Sue, I'll check in with you tomorrow to see if I missed anything, okay?
Okay.
Thanks, bye.
Thank you.
So the uses are, are one component of the regulations. And I haven't heard a lot, I haven't heard much about any uses that are off the table or folks feel are highly inappropriate with what's there. So I think that's a small part of what we look at. There's a lot in the weeds that maybe we don't, maybe people aren't ready to engage in. I just, I feel like we need to kind of bracket this, put it, come to an endpoint on it. And I don't want there to be something that's egregious in it. So I'm happy to set up a multi-board meeting or I'm happy to try to get to a place where we think the regulations are generally acceptable with the details that we have and just kind of package that and set it aside for future use if needed.
This is Mary. I'm unclear why we would continue on with regulations if we're not clear that we're gonna continue on with the 40R.
Yeah, Mary, can I, can I try to answer that? So the, whether it's a 40R or whether it's a, an overlay district that we do on our own, it would have a similar framework. It would say, what are the heights we want? What are the, what is the density that we would want? What are the building typologies that we want? All of those things can go in the regulations of a, an overlay dis- the parking overlay district that we would create on our own. So if we can kind of do that work now within this project, it's just work that we won't have to do later. So it's just creating a framework of what we might project for our own. And what we would strip out of it is the housing by right and other regulations that are required by the state under a 40R. But the rest is all, even the design standards, that's all good stuff if we agree with what's in there. So that's why I think that, that if we can come to some agreement on the regulations and the design guidelines, we'll be in a good place to proceed with an overlay district of our own.
So then I think we have to do it under a framework that we're just merely looking at an overlay district as one of the options. And then we move on to say, okay, what if we just change the bylaw? How would that look? But I think doing it under the guise of a 40R is, is vastly confusing, especially if this is gonna go to other boards and residents. That doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, I think the pretty much is the guideline for regulation.
No, I understand that, but we're, it, we're kind of working then with, within a, a document that's, that's kind of not real, because I, I, I just don't see the sense in that.
Well, I think you're just talking about naming it, aren't you? I mean, we can call it whatever we want.
Well, it's, well, sure, because the 40R has all sorts of different ramifications with housing, with affordable housing, with meeting any sort of, you know, getting to the 10%, all that kind of stuff. So you're gonna have different variables in that and you're gonna have a different amount of commercial versus any potential resi- residential. So those things are all, obviously clearly defined. Yes, there could be overlap in uses with the 40R as opposed to just a regular overlay. But I think we have to be very clear in our intent if we're talking about a 40R or an overlay or a bylaw change.
I think the only changes is the 255 units and 49% of it having to be residential.
Yes, some boiler, some boilerplate language changes for sure, but you could take the bones of it and create, and, and create an overlay district. So Mary, one reason to, to kind of finish up the work and the, another reason to kind of finish up the 40R is that if the 40B went away, then this would be something we could easily dust off and put back up there. But it also, you know, this is what we were, we got grant money to do and to just kind of stop and say, we're not gonna do it. I just think we're missing an opportunity to, to use that and work in that framework to, to get some additional funding. So I think, I think it would be good just to, to bracket it, get it to a final, you know, or a near final phase and then move forward with the rest.
My concern is that residents then see that, that we're continuing on with the 40R narrative and their voices haven't been heard on that.
So that's, that's a valid point. I think we need to be very clear what the options are and what our process is. So as I had said in the last meeting, that we would kind of get to a final draft. Then we would have a multi-board, get input from all the boards, have a multi-board meeting and talk about all the options. So I think you're right. I think we do need to be clear about what our intent is. And if the board has already come to that decision, we can, we can make that, you know, we can be very clear.
So Sue, are you suggesting there's a next step? You said additional funding.
What, no, what I think that I said, or if what I, what I meant is that there's still funding left. Because there were, we have grant funds or technical assistance to take us right through to town meeting to do all the paperwork and all the work that's associated with putting in an application for a 40R zone into DHCD. So that's a, that's a fair amount of scope. And if we're not going to do that, then there's some, some technical assistance left that we can use to create an overlay district of our own. Now, the fund, we, I will need to go back to the funders and say, this is what we're looking to do. And if it's not, if it's not allowing any of the uses that they were interested in helping us with, they may say, you know, they may say no, but if, if what we're proposing in our own overlay district is similar, but maybe not by right, by maybe housing residential by special permit, then there's probably a good chance that they would agree and say, this is still good work and we'll continue to fund it to the extent that we are. So.
In terms of work products, Sue, what would we be getting from MAPC in the future?
So we'd, we'd finalize the, as I envisioned it, we'd finalize, get a final draft of the 40R regulations, design guidelines, and then they would stop with that work. So they wouldn't have to produce any of the other documents. And there's quite a few of them that they would need to do, send to DHCD for that application. They wouldn't have to do that application. But instead, they would use their time to frame out a, another regulation, another overlay district bylaw that uses much of what we've created, but it's an overlay district bylaw for us. So we would get another, they would get, they would write the regulations.
Interesting.
Yes. So was there, was there a town match on this?
There was a, yes. There was a small town match on the first, on the first phase.
Not on the second phase?
That's correct. The second phase was all M A, M A P C and E E O A.
So it seems to me that we could get some valuable thinking done if we just take the 40R out of our brains briefly and think about the different kinds of uses that seem to make some sense to us. Do we want to have some mixed uses there? Which mixture of uses? The amount of them can be sort of a secondary conversation, hopefully informed by some work that Mr. Symboli will do. But I think we can gain a lot of ground. I still like my idea of the survey. Check off, check off the ones that you kind of like. Forget the 40R for the time being. I think we might produce some information that we can work with.
We have to go with these uses or we can go off into our own uses?
Our uses are, I mean, we don't have to go.
We're not married to these uses.
We're not married to any uses, even in, yeah. They're only proposed because that's what we, you know, through their, through our visioning and our planning process, we've said that we're interested in. So none of these came from outside.
So, so do these uses incorporate the ones that we've talked about in the recodification?
Have we added any, I don't think we've added any that, I, I don't, and I guess I don't understand. We haven't added any other uses to the.
You sent out a document. No, I know, but we had talked, there was a meeting that we talked about uses. I'm just making sure that all those things that we talked about at that particular meeting were incorporated on here.
I don't know that they're all corporate, incorporated here, because I don't know that they're all, I, I don't recall if they were all for the limited commercial district. Do you recall?
Yes.
They were? I'll, I'll double check and see.
Yeah, they were.
Here. Okay, thank, thank you. I'll double check and see if I can.
Email to everyone. Okay.
Okay. No, that's a good.
By the way, I think the marijuana businesses has to be in whatever we do. I think that's like a state law where we have to allow it somewhere.
Well, it's, it's in our, it's in our zoning.
This thing could change in many ways, except for that, if I recall correctly.
All of the things that are under existing, they would need to change the bylaw if we were to put them somewhere else. That's all.
Yeah, that's the direction we're headed. I'm just saying we can't exclude marijuana businesses. It's a small point.
You can't, you can't exclude it in town. You could change the district you wanted it in.
It'll go over really well.
It's a non, it's a non, it's a non-starter, but I'm just saying.
So one more question along those lines. So I'm still a bit baffled why M A P C would be willing to write our draft overlay bylaw, but are they then still circling it around? It's a smart growth district and thus it becomes a different, a certain town vote and certain requirements that way?
So M A P C is our regional planning agency, so they're there to assist us with our planning needs. So they don't, they're not, you know, they don't, they don't care if it's a 40R or if it's a, you know, or just a change in our zoning is, they'll help us do what we want. They're willing to do it under this one because they have some, some budget left. So I think the question goes to our other funders and, you know, as long as we're doing something that is considered wise and good planning at this point, they're not gonna object. I think they would not object to it.
Okay, yeah, because I mean, it's obviously different from the contract that was signed, so I just get leery of that.
Right. Yeah, so we would need to, that's why, that's why I said I would go back to their funders and, and talk about this different scope.
So I think for an assignment for next steps is to kind of, I like the idea of trying to get a consensus on uses and, and land use up there. I mean, that's our thing. Before we have meetings with other boards, I think we should have some clear direction on what we want as a group. So I, I'm kind of for this idea of maybe checking off some of these things for next meeting, or at least coming to some kind of consensus. Do we want single housing? Do we want housing at all? I mean, do we want farmer's market? We should try to get consensus from us before we go over to the other boards.
Ron, could I just push this a little further and see if I could send out something that looks at some of the dimensional requirements and get us thinking about what it looks like and, and feels like as well? So that we can kind of move the, move along in that direction as well.
Sue, I've, I have long been in favor of mini houses and small condos. They could service a whole variety of people in town. It would inherently be cheaper because they're smaller. But there aren't many places to do it. And it could be an argument to allow some attached townhouses if the unit sizes are kept small. It could make sense to have it up there. You see, there could be some reasons, some drivers behind us buying into the idea of some housing up there. I, I've, I've often thought there's some woodlands we have, but that if subdivision roads were built, you could do some, some small clusters of mini, mini townhouses or, or the like, but maybe.
Gary, you're leading us back into the weeds.
Well, I'm trying to say.
We're trying to, we're trying to get out of the weeds here. Why don't we just, I think Sue should write a memo to everybody and, and list uses and what the dimensions ought to be for those things and let us comment on them. And you can comment on little houses and Mary can comment on, I don't know, on office space, biotech office space. And we can put something together as a result.
I, I guess part of what I was thinking is that if there was, if there was residential above businesses downtown, you may, you may have, may have less need for it over here. That's all.
Put it in the memo, that will do it.
I'd be happy to create a tool that would, maybe folks would find easy to respond to.
That'd be great.
Is it something we need more time on or can the board kind of respond in two weeks?
Two weeks. Fine.
Two weeks, fine for everyone? That's great, great. So we can couple it with what we, from Symbol- Symboli, if, if anything, I hope.
Yeah.
That'd be a basis for the meeting.
Sounds good.
All right.
Ron, I don't think we should invite Mr. Symboli in. I think we should.
No, uh, no, 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 no intention of inviting him in.
Yeah.
For us to look at and talk about. Absolutely. Okay, I'm gonna end this part. I'm going to end this uh, part and just finish up here. Where the hell's my agenda? Here we go. So um, thank you. Uh, the next item was the recap of the DPW presentation. So um, I'm going to table this. Some, some frequently asked questions was prepared and it's going through a second vetting with the DPW and Chuck's not been around for the last few days. So we're trying to uh, I'm going to table this for a later discussion. Um, the next item is the app, approval of the regular minutes. Uh, Helene, did we get any comments on the minutes? Helene, you're on mute.
No, 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 I, I know. I was, um, no, but um, Gary, Gary Gilbert just voted yes on his way out.
Helene, I just have, I just have one typo.
Good.
It's page three under subcommittee and liaison updates. Where it says, Mr. Only reported that the Affordable Housing Trust and the Manchester Affording Housing. So just, that just needs to be changed to Affordable Housing.
Yeah. Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
I'll move that we approve the minutes as amended by Mary.
There's a second?
Can I second?
Seconded. Um, roll call vote, Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Lucio.
Yes.
Ms. Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert's left, I assume.
No, Russell, Russell left.
Okay, Gilbert?
Yes.
Um, only?
Yes.
And Mr. Russell voted yes in abstention, but uh, I I assume he voted as amended, but we can ignore that. And Chair votes yes. Subcommittee and liaison reports. I have nothing from the season. Anybody else have any report? Want to share?
So the Affordable Housing Trust has a meeting tomorrow night and they are entertaining a proposal by, I guess, the North Shore Community Development Corporation and the Citizens by the Sea Group for uh, some, an affordable housing project in the downtown of Powderhusling. So the meeting's at 5:30. I encourage everyone who wants to know what's going on to attend.
Okay. Sounds good. Any other updates?
I have a brief update with FinCom.
Yes, Ms. Foley.
So I did reference it earlier. They did talk about land use management briefly. Um, their thoughts were that there needed to be more input from the town before entering into more development. Need to adjust zoning and narrow in on more commercial in the LCD. And they requested that they would like to hear from the planning board on scope and long-term planning from the planning board and discuss the economic analysis request. So I don't know if you've received anything, Ron, but they discussed that they wanted to meet with the planning board. Um.
Good.
They talked briefly about the Manchester Housing Authority sites, just that the 50,000 was spent on a study for that, increasing the number of units. Talked about site costs and land costs and things like that, but perhaps we'll hear more. Oh, no, different topic, but yeah. So they just talked about the the MHA proposal.
All right. Thanks, Mary. Um, next meeting I have, uh, again, we're going on this second and fourth, so the 12th and the 26th. Uh, we've, uh, Helene has um, scheduled for us. Do we want to talk about May, second and fourth week in May? Helene, do we want to go that far out or?
I just, um, it's that. Whatever you choose, just remember, I, I don't have my calendar and Memorial Day is one of those days. So watch out.
Uh, let me just check. I have my calendar. Um. May 10 and May 24 and Memorial Day is the 31st.
Oh, good.
So we can go May 10 and May 24.
Good for me.
You want to lock those up. Reminded to the board that we have a, um, so two meetings in April, uh, I mean, that week of April 12th, and then we have Bobrowski on the 14th, which is a public um, workshop. Uh, we talked about agenda items for next meeting and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion been to adjourn, it's been made and seconded, Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Lucio. She made the motion. She seconded. I assume it's yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was on mute. I thought I was, no, yes.
Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gil, Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Allee?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Thank you all. It's a little late.
Thank you, Ron.
Okay. Thanks, John.
Excellent.
Thank you very much. Bye-bye.